Looks like we have a forum we can do here. So I'm going to reopen the public meetings.
I think it said it started recording.
Yeah, and it is 6:52 PM that we are reopening. So the, in new business, excuse me, I'll take this now.
I do public comments.
We received today a document, a draft document of the reopening protocols for the fall of 2021. And rather than have Beth read it to us again, if anybody, there are certain points that we could, we should just clarify that we all understand. And if you feel like you want to ask Beth a question, certainly I'll give her an opportunity to make an opening statement, but we.
Public comments.
I am so sorry, you public. Please raise your hand if you have a statement to be made before we start our, our own discussion. And I will call on you. I want to comment that we had a wonderful discussion last night with 50 people on the Zoom call. We heard a lot from people, which we really appreciated. You all who are now on for a second meeting, putting your time into this whole issue. So thank you very much. I'm not seeing any hands up at the moment. I want to make sure that if you wanted to speak, you know that I won't be calling on people later in the meeting, once we get started with the business. Dennis, I don't know why your hand is up.
Well, I just wondered if you could kind of give us a quick, your insight on, on, on the, say, 50 or so people, what the temperature of that group was at all? Could you, could you elaborate on that maybe a little bit?
Well, it was my impression that there was support for masking. And there was interest in knowing more about our testing procedures and which we may discuss tonight. There was some discussion where some people were interested in requiring vaccinations, not universally. And I mean, not everybody was feeling that way. And also there were questions about our notification protocols where, say, a child becomes sick or a family member of that child becomes sick in a classroom, that the whole classroom is not notified, that there's a whole protocol, that only the people who are close contacts get notified. And and Beth did a wonderful job of trying to clarify what isn't that clear, because it's a case by case basis for a lot of the issues that people wanted to have a one answer for, but there is no one answer in a lot of situations, and things are always in flux. So I, I felt it was a positive meeting. And I'm so far pleased with our process of trying to digest all of the information that's coming in. I want to say that I really appreciate all the work that the, that Beth, the nurses and the admin team have done to try to know as much as they can, so that we make the best informed decisions, because it's quite difficult for individual school committee members to become experts on, on these issues. So that's my short summary. I think Bonnie was on the call. She may want to add something else to the, the summary. Bonnie?
Yes, thank you. And I think either you or Beth might want to respond here. There were a lot of people who didn't, who were on the call, who are not clear of what the authority is of the school committee in connection with this, and what the authority is of the superintendent. So for the benefit of those people who weren't on yesterday, maybe Jane giving a bit of clarification about what we are allowed to do as a school committee. And I will say it was, I thought, an excellent meeting in terms of the numbers who showed up and really had good questions. But Jane, if you clarify in terms of where our authority exists and where it doesn't, it might be helpful to those who were not on board yesterday.
Well, there, it's an interesting situation. You'll see on our agenda that we are going to vote possibly on a masking policy, and we may vote on a vaccination policy. Those are the two things that are in our laps to decide. The commissioner has mandated quite a few things, so that even if our administrative team doesn't agree with them, they can't do anything about it, such as there will be no remote teaching. Even if we thought it was a good idea, we don't have the option. And no half days for planning. So there are certain things that are put out by the state that we have no wiggle. And so it's an interesting dance to try to do what's right for our community without overstepping the boundaries that have been created for us. Say?
Thank you.
Yeah. So I think because we had a universal mask mandate last year that was never canceled, as far as I know, where in the building, all children, pre-K through 12, all teachers, all staff were masked. I have my mask off right now because I'm six feet away from other people who are indoors. I think the only changes that Beth has brought up from last year is the six foot distance has been modified to three feet and, or less. There is no distance. But we are going to do our best, say, in the cafeteria and in places where kids have to have their masks off to make some distance. And there is no mask mandate outdoors. So our campus is going to be open to people to use the, the ground. So those are the main differences that I've picked up from last year in terms of our protocols. And there's a wonderful document with frequently asked, asked questions that Beth has put together. And I don't know whether we're the only ones to have it at this point, but it will be going out to the full community.
Probably within the next day or so, depending on what we talk about tonight, we'll add to it with more information or, you know, anything before we send it out. We'll keep adding to it as we, as we get more questions and more information.
Okay. I hope that that's a good enough introduction. I think is there anything in, A, is the discussion of the reopening protocols, is there anybody from the committee who's read this draft that would like to hear more from Beth on any of the issues raised? I see Jeffrey's hand.
Yes. What? Thank you for the recognition. Beth, I think just at a high level, for the sake of public discourse, if you could spell out what the recommendation is from staff that you are making.
So what I tried to break down for everybody today is the school committee is responsible for policy oversight of the budget and oversight, hiring and firing of the superintendent. This, my job with administrative team is to implement and manage the operations of a school district. So what we tried to do is put together, gather information from a, a variety of stakeholders, since we've received the guidance, including meeting, survey data from across the state, the Berkshire County Superintendent's, public, the public health officials, the SBRA leadership, our school physician, we had a meeting for faculty and staff today. We, our own local public health team. So with that, I think the major things that we're talking about that have an effect as far as reopening were things about masking, as we talked about vaccinations and testing. So I'll highlight what our recommendations were to the committee based on the information that we've gathered administratively. The other piece that we put together were more operational things on FAQ, when we're talking about distance and, you know, what is, what is going to be the protocol specifically? What does it mean to be a close contact? Those pieces of information are coming in and are going to be sent out as we receive them. So you know, we, this FAQ talks a little bit about what the testing options are. I'm not going to go over all of that. The important recommendations for tonight, and I think for this special school committee meeting, are the following. One is on masking, and it is our recommendation as an administrative team that we follow what Jane has said, keep our masking mandate, regardless of your vaccination status, when you are in the building. That's for students, faculty and staff, and any visitors that come in the building. And that is across the board without exception. So that was our recommendation on masking. Vaccinations, that is not an area where specifically, is an area that I think we can make a recommendation. But what we said to the school committee is that we can support any vaccination requirement for faculty and staff with the allowances for medical and or religious exemptions and, and the possibility of testing for those who need that exemption. As far as testing, we didn't really make a recommendation as much as, say, I guess we did. We, we basically said we are open to having the opportunity to explore every type of testing option that's available to the state. So we did put in an, an application and an ask, ask, ask station statement to do that. And we will be working with our local public health nurses and agencies to administer them applicably. And we're going to keep evaluating these processes to see which ones we want to keep, you know, and, but we will be having testing opportunities and following those protocols. So those are our recommendations as an administrative team based on the information that we have.
We'd just like to add with the testing, that's with parental permission.
Yes, that's, that's how it is right now. You can't do.
Right, just to be clear about that, that we're making it available in various forms. We're looking, we are looking into making various types of testing available, available for different circumstances.
I, my, my, our recommendation was more about staff at this point.
Oh, that was for staff. Okay. All right. So I see Dennis's hand up and Bonnie. All right, Dennis?
Very quickly, Beth, it's not in our purview at all for the testing, right? That, that's, we have no purview on that, as I recall, right?
The, the purview for the school committee is if you were to say, as part of a mandate, that there would be a requirement that those who can't be vaccinated, et cetera, would be subject to testing at a, at a particular time, that is under your purview. That is your policy. It would be something you would require as a condition of employment.
Got it, got it, got it. Because I, I thought that was kind of out, out of our bailiwick, to be quite frank.
Well, the, the management and the, and the admission, you know, administering testing is operation.
Well, you, you always get to do all the work. We know that. I mean, that's, that's the whole plan.
Okay, Bonnie?
Um, Beth? This may be in some of the material you're sending out already, but in the major study they did in North Carolina with a million kids, they found that the largest transmission, I know you know, is in, with extracurriculars and sports. And do we have any guidelines that we're going to be having in those areas?
Uh, well, the guy.
They're already getting ready in soccer. Okay, sorry.
No, that's fine. The guidance right now is that outdoors is the safest place to be, and there is no, there's no masking requirement and no, there's no limitations that I'm currently aware of for that. Again, if you're doing an extracurricular activity or an after-school program that is indoors, you would, you know, there is a masking requirement or whatever we decide would be applicable.
Then when our, so does that mean, since we know onboard any transportation, you have to be masked? I'm going, the kids are all over each other when the teams travel. I'm going, am I correct in assuming that all mask mandates for related to sports travel will be?
Everything's a travel period. If you're riding on a bus, you, A, have an seat and you have to wear a mask. That's not optional. Those are, those are, that's a state thing.
Okay. And how will they handle with, you know, sports with the locker room and all, when it's after school and all?
It'll be same. So as, as we've talked about before, any mitigating process that we had in place last year will remain in place where applicable, where we can. So they'll have to, they'll have to do their best to keep, you know, you would have to wear a mask, but there isn't really a distancing. We're going to do our best to keep people as far apart as we can. That, those are the requirements. So we're going to follow the guidelines unless they change. But, and, and where there is an availability for assigned seating or so that we know. The importance of those types of things are for contact tracing, if we need to do that. Again, it's not about the distancing requirements. And as we've heard from a lot of people, that is one of their less level of mitigating concerns as it is masking, vaccinations, et cetera.
So Jesse will come before us as usual to give us the sports, for us to approve the fall sports season.
I don't think there'll be, there's, right now, there, there are no requirements to do anything different than all you guys will be discussing is whether or not you want masks on in a building or not. But the, the rest of it, there's nothing, there's, there's nothing that we have to do differently.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Everything from last, if you, if you, if you look at the guy, the way it says, it says, it says most of the conditions for last year have been lifted. So that's, that's what the guided states explicitly right now.
Okay.
Danielle?
Thank you. Just to go back to what Dennis asked about our purview as far as testing. What about the pool testing with the kids? Is that, I know that we were doing that in the spring. Is that going to continue? Or is that something else we have to discuss?
We've applied to do all types of testing, my, the, the, but, but testing is optional. Parents have to opt in to participate in any of the testing. So if, if parents decide that, depending on whatever circumstance it is, whether a child's vaccinated, not vaccinated, symptomatic, and they, they decide that they would allow any of the types of testing that we have available, they would, would sign off on that. So it's, it's not mandated for everybody. It's, it's voluntary.
And then, okay. And then, but for those that do opt in, is there a set, do we have something already set that we will continue with the, with the pool testing weekly or?
Yeah, we, we are going, I, no, we, we are going to be continuing with three different types of testing, and that will be in the FAQ. I'll talk about the, you know, what that looks like. We did get approved today. Actually, we put in our application the other, this morning, and we got approved this afternoon. So they'll be in contact with us in 48 hours, and they'll be providing training so that we are up and ready when children hit the building and faculty and staff.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Dennis?
Go to Art. Go to Art next. He's got his hand up. He doesn't have a hand up sign.
Damn. Oh, there he is, there he is.
There he is. Okay, Art.
Um, sports outside, are you going to eliminate the amount of spectators, or is that, is it open fair game for as many that want to come?
Outside is wide open. There are no restrictions outside.
What happens when basketball and volleyball seasons start?
It's not, I'm not there yet, Art. One, one thing at a time. Right now, indoor is a different situation. Outdoor is, is, there's, there's no restrictions.
Okay.
But I will say my hunch is as long as nothing goes crazy, it would, you know, it would be masking. Again, remember, there's not, no distance requirement. So it would just be about masking.
Okay, Dennis, back to you.
Uh, yeah, I, I guess the question I, I, you know, I'm just kind of of the assumption that if we, you know, if we do adopt everybody inside masking.
Did we lose you, Dennis?
Dennis, we don't hear you anymore?
Dennis, we don't hear you.
Yeah, I think you lost this connection, so we might.
Okay, Bonnie, I'll go to you temporarily.
Okay. Um, so will we have, oh, I think Dennis is back.
No, did, did you, did you hear my question?
No.
I, I basically said, I was just kind of asking Beth that my assumption would be that if we adopt a, a full mask, you know, indoors mandate, that, that basically that would mean that, what about the indoor sports, like basketball and wrestling and so forth? Does that mean that they now have to wear masks?
Correct.
That'll be fun.
Well, I mean, we can make those, let's cross those bridges when we get to them.
The fall reopening first, going.
Okay, now I'll ask my question. In, in the material you're sending out, Beth, will you be reiterating and explaining to parents, you know, the benefits of taking part in pool testing, et cetera, so that they understand it, just in case they forgot?
I have, I have whatever links are available. I describe them. I tell, you know, I give them the opportunity. So, you know, and there will be ongoing communications from the nurses, from the principals in their weekly messages. So there'll be lots and lots of information coming. So I, I have very, I have the earliest information. So I'm just going to keep sending it as we get it. But this is at least a start, so they'll know what's going to be available to us.
Great. Thank you.
So I think we're ready to move on to item B, which is the masking policy. And our policy subcommittee chair, Dennis Sears, has sent us the, the face covering recommendation file policy, EBCFA, that's recommended by the MASC. And Dennis, would you like to make a motion? Given that you, yeah.
Dennis, we can't hear you.
Who, who, who was, who was asked to make the motion?
I was asking you, Dennis, as chair of the policy subcommittee, who was interested in the face covering policy sent to us by the MASC, whether you wanted to put a motion on the floor that we, we wrote on that motion, on that policy.
I'm, I'm assuming that if I do so, that everybody has a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay. Anyway, okay, I, I move that we adopt the most recent face covering policy that was distributed by, by MASC, EBCFA, face coverings.
Second.
Okay, so seconded by Jeffrey. That policy was sent out to you earlier in the week for your review. Does anybody have any questions for Dennis on that, on this?
Bonnie goes.
Hi, Bonnie?
I'd like to amend it.
So would I.
So would you? All right.
Go ahead, you start.
I'll start. Here are my changes. If you go in the second paragraph, one, two, three, five lines down, after the word "the district", I added, "tonight establishes by action of the SBRSD School Committee." So that's my first one.
Okay, wait a second. So you want to take?
I'm not removing anything. I'm clarifying.
Say that sentence so I can copy it down.
Five lines down after the word "the district". Tonight establishes by action of the SBRSD School Committee.
Okay, thank you.
In the second paragraph, the end of the first sentence goes on school transportation. I added, "regardless of vaccination status."
Okay.
Then if you go down to about six more paragraphs, the paragraph that begins "exceptions to this policy",
Yeah.
the last sentence, I began, I added the word "transparent" to face shields. In case someone doesn't know what they are, that's what they're talking about. So I added the word transparent. Then in the next paragraph, I added a second sentence, provided by the student's family. I added, "bandanas or gaiters are not acceptable face coverings." I added that sentence. And then I would like it to be, I don't know if we, given our contract, I think we could do it in that same paragraph where it goes onboard school transportation. I added in parentheses, "bus drivers will have supplies of disposable masks." Meaning I don't want the kids thrown off. I want to make sure that there are disposable masks. And you just about at the end of my comments, in the next paragraph, that begins if students, that paragraph, this, I said, the second sentence, I began, "if there is no appropriate exemption, comma", the student.
Or are you Bonnie? I'm sorry.
This paragraph that begins, "if students are in violation of this policy",
Got it, got it.
The second sentence, I began, "if there is no appropriate exemption, comma", then the student may be removed from the school building. And I added, "and therefore unable to participate." And then the rest of the, rest of it I left. So those are the ways I would like to amend this policy.
Any comments?
I think you need a second for my amendments.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Dennis, seconding the amendment.
But I'd like to amend the amendment.
Okay.
I'd, I'd like to add to Bonnie's list on the last paragraph of the first page of EBCFA, under the exceptions to this policy. You know, I, I think down at the, the, the third line in that bottom paragraph, in the, in the next to the last sentence, I, I, I would like to see us add "after the Board of Health and Superintendent."
I'm trying to find. I'm trying to find where you are.
Yeah, I, I don't see it either.
Under the second set of bullets in that paragraph where it says, "building principal-"
Must be approved by the building principal and consult consultation with the school nurse or local Board of Health, and I just wanted to add in there "and super, and the superintendent". I, I, I think that, and my, my rationale on that is that I think this is such a key subject that it needs to be escalated to that level, that any exceptions that the superintendent is aware of.
So in other words, are you adding "and" or, or, are you saying-
I'm adding "and".
"And the superintendent"?
Right.
So am I allowed to just accept that, accept that as an additional to my amendments, and then we could-
Yeah, if you can, that moves us along a little quicker, that'd be good.
That would be good, then, if Jeff would second it with that.
Second.
Okay, so that we have-
Do you quickly just go through it one more time? Sorry, there was a lot of edits more than I expected.
So, um, Dennis accepted Bonnie's amendments and he added, after Board of Health in the next to last paragraph on the, uh, first page, um-
I think it's because it was my motion, my second, I have to second everything.
I know, that's fine, I just wanted, you have the second from what Dennis said, is just add "and the superintendent" after Board of Health in that paragraph.
Totally, but I think also with Bonnie's recommendations for amendments, I have to second everything.
Okay.
Point of order, Dennis, do you think that's correct?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you very well.
As a point of order, sorry, I'm a little confused right now. Because Bonnie-
You have, you have to, because you did, since you seconded it, yes, you have to also second the change that was just made.
All of the change, even Bonnie. Okay, so could we just quickly go through all the edits? Because I don't think, I, I just want to be clear on what.
Okay, I actually can send it to everyone if you want, and if it makes it easier for Lynette, I can send it as well. But for right now, I'll go through, I'll just read them off.
Please.
That helps. All right, in the second paragraph, one, two, three, four, five lines down, after the word "the district", where the district is capital letter, I added "tonight establishes by action of the SBRSD school committee".
Okay.
Okay, got that? In the next paragraph, the first sentence I added at the end, "regardless of vaccination status", all right? Then four paragraphs down, the paragraph that begins "exceptions to this policy",
Yep.
Three lines down, after "or local Board of Health", add "and the superintendent".
Yep.
Can you just hold on that one, please? Because, um, there's some confusion, uh, because if we keep all the "or"s in there and then add superintendent, the last one looks like local Board of Health and, but the rest are "or", so I think we just have to rethink that sentence.
I think it, I think the way it goes is with the "school nurse or local Board of Health, comma, and the superintendent" would then separate you out as-
But what you're saying is, um-
Okay.
Beth, would you prefer that we move that up to say, uh, following "building principal in consultation with the superintendent"?
No, I think that the consultations all happen with that group, it's almost like I'm the end of that, right? Because you're saying no matter what-
My, my only purpose was that I, I felt that the superintendent needed to be involved in that decision process, that's all. However you want to format it, you're the superintendent, you decide where you want your, your title to go.
Okay, Beth, what if we say to total clarity, the school nurse and the superintendent, or local Board of Health and the superintendent?
I think you're saying, "principal in consultation with school nurse, comma, local Board of Health, comma, and the superintendent", right?
Unless, unless you're saying that.
Unless you're saying I'm-
Or the Board of Health.
No, the, no, the real issue is because it could be the school nurse or the local Board of Health.
Right, but it, but-
Well, I'm, I'm-
But it has to be-
My feeling is that the intent on how this thing was structured was that in some cases, you may not have a school nurse present, but you may have a local Board of Health person present. So that's why that became the "or" that's in there. I, I'm willing to bet that's how that phrase came about.
Yeah.
So does it work for you if we do the school nurse and the superintendent, or a local Board of Health and the superintendent? No matter who does it, it has to be with you?
Yes, right, that's, so as long as it's saying that, I, I think that's what your intent was.
Okay. All right, then the last sentence in that paragraph begins, I added the word "transparent". Yeah, we don't want somebody doing a Halloween Darth Vader face shield. In the next paragraph, I added after the first sentence, "bandanas or gaiters are not acceptable face coverings".
I think we did that once before in the past, didn't we? I seem to remember that one.
Yes, it just, but it should be in this one. In the last pair, last sentence of that paragraph, after the word "transportation", I put in parentheses, "bus drivers will have supplies of disposable masks", closed parentheses. And then in the next paragraph, second sentence, I began with, "if there is no appropriate exemption, comma", and then after "the student may be removed from the school building", I added "and therefore unable to participate", that's it.
Oh. That, would, is there an issue with the operational aspect on any of this from a policy? So, Beth, is there an operational implication from any of the suggestions that were making to us before I seconded it?
Well, I just have to kind of make sure that, um, which I think we're probably okay, that I don't have Jeremy here to tell me for sure that I have enough supplies on hand to be handing out to the bus company for disposable masks, but we have backup masks, so I'll, I'll just confer what you say, um, to Ben. I don't know what I have right now, but I, I should have, I mean, I have backups for, for us, obviously. You know, I, for, for students who come into the building, may have forgotten that. It is the responsibility of the family of, you know, of, um, to send a child with a mask, but we obviously will have backups for those incidents where, um, uh, something happens during the day or someone forgets. Um, but I, I will now have to make sure that we have those additional supplies available for buses, that's all.
I second the amendments.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, so now, um-
Art, Art has his hand up, Shane.
Art?
I, I just want to say, not, I can't say 100%, but all the buses try to have extra masks on the school buses, and that would be if we transport sports kids, we should have masks on the bus. We try to do that for all the buses.
Great.
Okay. Are we prepared to vote on this, uh, policy?
I think you first have to vote on all the, on approving the amendments, or can you just do it as amended? No, we have to vote, we have to approve the amendments.
Okay, let's approve the amendments, like, Dennis, do you have your hand up for a reason or just you forgot to take it down?
Well, I, I, I have some other things I kind of wanted to bring into the discussion, but we, let's, let's get this one, this change made first before we do that.
All right, so, um, there's a motion on the floor by Jeffrey.
Yes, can I speak to the motion really quick? Um, I think in terms of practicality, um, with masks, we are asking a lot of the staff to have to police people, whether they're vaccinated or not vaccinated, for something that could be very easy, like just keep it at standard and go. And I think this is just important for the sanity, that maybe there might be justifications for letting unvaccinated people having, uh, no masks, but given the variance and the extra time that it would take for the staff to monitor it, um, I think that would be problematic. So I'm very in favor of this, um, motion.
Okay, so, all right, so, uh, we need a motion to accept the amendments.
No, I think we just vote.
All right, a second to approving the amendments.
Second.
Vote.
Okay, so we're just gonna, just to make sure that we're doing it right. So, um, Carrie Anne, we're, this is on amendments only.
Yes.
Uh, Dennis Melendez Delaney?
Yeah.
She has to unmute her. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Art Pataki? Jeff Blaugrind?
Yes.
Bonnie Silvers?
Yes.
Danil Kelly?
Yes.
Uh, Hannah Bracken?
Yes.
Uh, Dennis Sears?
Yes.
And Jane Burke, okay. Carrie Anne, did I get you?
Yes, you did.
So now we're going to, uh, vote on the amended motion.
Oh, wait, wait a minute, I, I said I had some further discussion on, on, on the document, now that we've modified it.
Okay.
And it's, and it's basically kind of a discussion to see if anybody is interested in making a change, but if, if, if you go down to the, let's see, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh paragraph, that starts off additionally, "face masks or face coverings will not be required when appropriate social distancing is enforced". The question I have here is that, uh, uh, who determines what is the appropriate social distancing? I mean, are, are we saying we're sticking with the quote "three-foot standard" or what, you know?
So again, there are no distancing requirements. What we're saying is we're going to do our best to continue to provide distance, and I'm not even giving a number, um, because it's not necessarily 100% feasible, like can be done 100% of the time. All we can say is we're going to do our very best to, um, either make use of the outdoors, keep people as distant as reasonably capable of doing. Um, so, but again, there isn't any specific requirement that we have to follow.
Who gets to resolve the issues if somebody gets really bent out of shape because they're told that they're too close and they, and, and they don't think they're too close or something like that? That, that's kind of the whole purpose of why I thought that, that we want to try to refine that at all.
Well, I don't think, I think it would be going against-
Bent out of shape, you know?
I think they're going to be more bent out of shape if I have to get a ruler out and measure three feet everywhere when I, I can't guarantee that. I think, I think we just have to do our best to, like we've done before, and we're all-
Set bridge if it becomes a tough river, right?
Yeah, I, we, we have not really had the issue. I think people have been very respectful and, and, um, everybody has, uh, done the very best they can to, um, to keep each other safe, and I, I'm hopeful that this, that won't change as we move forward.
Okay. But, but, but that's enough. Uh, turning over to the next to the last line, which is a paragraph by itself, I guess. This is the one that talks about visitors in violation of this policy will be denied entry to the school district facility. Do we want to specify a duration for that, or does this mean forever?
As long as this, as long as the mask policy is in place, um, that, that they will be removed from the facility if they do not comply.
Do you think we need to, do we, do you think we need to add that to it?
Well, I think clearly if somebody comes-
I mean, denied entry, excuse me.
I don't think it implies denied entry forevermore. I think it means they just can't come in that day.
Without, well, if you're not in compliance, you're not coming in that day, that's what I mean.
Right, it's not saying you can never come back.
Well, no, but it, but it says, it says visitation, visitors in violation of this policy.
You put your mask on.
Yeah, so are you, it, it, so are you implying that, that it's more than-
What, what I'm implying is that the way it reads is that if I come in and I get busted because I don't have a mask and I'm not, and I'm denied entry, that it basically says, "I can't get in forever".
No, that's not, it doesn't say that.
Well, I'm saying that's how it reads.
No.
That's how it would be interpreted.
It, not at all, and not to me.
Yeah. All right.
Go win.
All right. Bonnie, got your hand up again?
I don't think she took it down.
Okay. Uh, I don't think you have support, Dennis, for changing that because it seems clear to the rest of us that it means just on that occasion. So I'm prepared to put this, uh, out for the final vote.
Okay.
All right, so we're voting on this policy with all the, the amendments we've made. All right, um, roll call vote, Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Dennis Melendez Delaney?
Yes.
Uh, Art Pataki?
Yes.
Uh, Jeff Blaugrind?
Yes.
Bonnie Silvers? Uh, Danil?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, Dennis?
Yes.
And James, yes, so we don't have an official vote from Bonnie?
See if she's back.
Are you back?
Yes.
Oh, I hear you, okay, fine, good, all right. Got that done, all right, now, the question of vaccination policy, and I'll open discussion on, on that. Uh, raise your hand if you have, uh, Bonnie?
I have a question, even though we just passed policy, and it may be sounding a little redundant, but don't we have to pass a motion regarding the masks?
We, well, we had a motion to accept this policy, and now we have the policy, as far as I understand. I don't see that there's any extra voting that's needed.
Oh, because I had a motion regarding on the, related to the dates and everything.
When it goes into the second?
Can I read it and then you could decide if it's redundant and we don't need it?
Go ahead.
Okay.
I, I think, I can't see how it would be needed, but-
The Southern Berkshire Regional School District School Committee, following the guidance of the CDC, the American Academy of PDA- following the guidance of the CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics, D E S I, and local Departments of Health, moves that is the opening of school on August 30th, 2021, all students, staff, vendors, and visitors to any of the school districts, regardless of vaccination, are required to adhere to policy E B C F A. This advisory may change over time depending on changing circumstances and the guidance of those noted previously. The superintendent will update the school committee at each school committee meeting as to compliance, as well as any changes in recommendations."
Is there anybody want to raise their hand in support of adding to what we've already just passed?
Well, I think she's making it as a separate motion, and I'll second the motion.
Alright, so now we have, does anybody want to speak for or having this vote, or against having this vote?
So I would like to speak to it. This is basically a CYA. It basically says, "on the opening of school on August 30th, we're putting into effect E B C F A." And it also adds that there may be changes over time and that the superintendent will, and therefore Jane, you will put on every agenda, updates. So that's my reasoning. It's basically a CYA. And it puts us on record of how we're in the, the start of our implementation of the policy. So that's my reasoning. Thank you.
Jeffrey?
I appreciate the spirit, but I am going to speak against it. I think it's implicit that today marks, this evening marks the start of the policy, and it will be reported as such, and I'd like to keep the date as such. But I don't think we need it in policy that it's a standing item. I agree the importance of having updates on any differences on that, but I think for the sake of easy reading, it should just be clear that it's, it's already there.
Hannah?
Yeah, I guess I mostly would reiterate what Jeffrey just said. I think that we all have this policy to look over. It has specific language. It says that it will remain in place until rescinded, and I was understanding it to go into effect immediately.
Based on those comments, I'm going to withdraw my motion if Dennis will withdraw his second. If that's the sentiment of the school committee.
I'll withdraw my second.
Alright, I'm withdrawing my motion.
Okay, thank you very much. Alright, so now we get on to the vaccination issue, and Hannah, your hand still up? Did you want to?
Oh, sorry.
I'm taking it down, sorry.
Okay, alright. So just to remind you that the admin team relayed to us that they will support decisions that we make about requiring vaccinations, but they are not taking their own stand on it. This is our decision to make when we, when and if we feel we want to. So Dennis?
I believe in our executive session. We discussed that, that the whole idea of, that we needed to get some further feedback from the staff before we made a decision on this.
Yes, thank you, Dennis, for bringing that into open session. Arthur?
My motion, we table this until we get the other information we're looking for.
Second.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, so Arthur-
Can I speak to the motion?
I would like to amend that.
Well, wait, 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 let me get down to the, that we have a motion to table until we have further information from staff. And then we have a second from Janice. Alright, now let's get into discussion. Jeffrey?
Thank you. I believe that vaccinations is going to be the most effective way for providing the best sense of immunity for our community as much as possible. I think that it makes sense to listen to what the teachers' union says about their surveys that they're conducting right now of their bodies so that we can be in dialogue as we move forward to hopefully consensus in this. And I believe the discussion of what staff will be getting back to us is discussions of what the the teachers' union will be able to provide an insight. Not just teachers' union, all units, sorry.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bonnie?
I would like to amend this so that it is for next Thursday's meeting, as opposed to a "I'm indefinite."
Okay, do you accept that amendment, Dennis?
Art, no.
Didn't you second the motion?
I thought, I'm sorry, I thought Art had to accept it.
I think both have, both people have to accept it.
Yeah.
I accept that.
Okay, so until August 26th meeting. Okay, so now our motion, which Art has accepted-
And Janice.
And Janice is accepted too.
But I don't know.
Do you accept that too, Janice?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion now reads, "we table the discussion of vaccination policy until our August 26th meeting when more information is available." Bonnie, do you have further additions to it?
Oh, sorry, no, I'm just, you know, Art accepted, I'm happy. I don't want to drag you on, that's all.
No, I don't either, because school is opening and we need a physician. So I appreciate that putting a timestamp on it encourages people to speak to each other very quickly. Alright, I'd like to bring this to a vote. Alright, all those in favor of tabling discussion of vaccination policy until our August 26th meeting when more information is available. Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Melendez? And Art Pataki?
Yes.
Jeff Blaugrind?
Yes.
Bonnie Silvers?
Yes.
Danil Kelly? Well, there you are, Danil?
Yep, yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
And Jane, yes, I want to thank you, I want to just remark on how much we care about having these discussions before we have, make up our mind. And I hope that the public understands that we're not dragging our feet or being reluctant to put policies into place. We want to make sure that we have heard all of the information that we need so we can make a decision we can feel comfortable with. So if you get pressure from people why haven't we made up our mind, I think we know the answer is that we are listeners and thinkers and learners, and we are doing, trying to come up with the best situation possible for our kids. So Bonnie, did you have something to say?
Yes, I did, really. Beth, do you want me to send the policy with the revisions to Lynette? Will that help?
I'm sure she would greatly appreciate that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright. Harvey?
Can I motion to?
Yes, yeah.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a fight for a second. Who gets it?
Art.
I don't care, Art get it.
Okay, and we'll have a roll call vote. Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
And Jane, yes, I want to thank you for taking this extra time, all the listeners who are still on. Thank you for your interest in this whole issue. And thank you, Beth, for trying to get this straight.
Thank you, everybody.